Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 8th zoning board hearing. Saturday springs here. It's going to be 60 degrees, so there's no excuse for you people not to go out and cut your lawns and clean your shrub beds and help somebody else. Okay, we've got some general business really quick to go over. Currently, right now, we've got the minutes of the meetings of January 11th, which I have reviewed, and then, of course, December 14th. Since we do not have all the members present, there's a quorum to approve these minutes. They'll have to wait till the next hearing because a number of our current board members sitting here tonight, one or two were on one and one or two are on the other, and we do not have enough quorum to vote in the minutes because they weren't part of that meeting, so we'll put those aside for the next meeting. Under the general business, there's a request to release the bond, which is Fairfield-Milford Limited Partnership, which is the apartment complex that is up off of Deer Street. We are currently holding a $550,000 bond, and I'm going to read the letter from the town planner who has inspected the site. And this is, "In October 2022, Milford Fairfield Limited Partnership provided a performance bond to the town in accordance with the conditions of the comprehensive permit decision for 200 Deer Street project. The $550,000 performance bond referenced the unfinished paving landscape and related improvements of work. Representative for the Quillon Deer Street has requested release of the bond. I have performed multiple inspections and reviews the as-built information provided by the applicant's representatives. Most site development elements, including the comprehensive permit decision, were also included in the conservation orders of condition. Those elements, drainage maintenance, paving, and landscaping, were inspected and confirmed as complete prior to the Conservation Commission issuing the partial certificate of compliance for all work completed within the 200 Deer Street property. The comprehensive permit decision special conditions number four and six relate to the Deer Street intersection with the Upper Charles Trail interconnection." Intersection, I'm sorry, not interconnection, intersection, which are not referenced in the order of conditions. Although not specifically identified in the performance bond, I inspected the site for compliance with these conditions as related improvements. The signage and signals at the trail intersection appear to meet the requirements of condition number four in the special permit. However, there is no dedicated bicycle lane or associated signage as described in the condition for number six, and it's in the town engineer's professional opinion, it is not practical to construct or dedicate a bicycle lane on Deer Street due to the dimensional environmental constraints. Therefore, they were recommending the zoning board of appeals approve, release the funds associated with the $550,000 performance bond. Questions? I know one of, I know a part of the decision on this project was to, because Deer Street was so skinny, is to try and get a bicycle lane in there to connect to the trail. Again, I, there's no, there's no direct communication from the developer indicating whether they made an effort to do this or provided a reason why they couldn't do it, and I don't know what this board would like to do. It would be nice if we had some type of communication from that development group as to why, and maybe they didn't even make an effort to try and make it work. So I'm going to leave it up to the board on what they'd like to do. You know, maybe what we do is we can give them, provide a partial release with the understanding that we got an explanation of why, why they didn't make an effort to try and work with the bike lane. Again, Deer Street's a skinny street. There's 242 apartments that are currently built there. There's another 242 that may be coming online, and there's going to be children with bikes. So what would you like to do?
Are you talking about from where the apartments are coming down the street to connect to the bike trail there? Is there a sidewalk on that going down to the bike trail, Dave?
I'm not sure. Again, they provided no plans on, on anything, so it's been a while since, I mean, this was the first one we permitted back in '21, I think. So that's the question, whether we provide the partial release and then get an explanation why it doesn't work. And it could very well be wetlands, conditions on the site, but there's no explanation why they didn't meet condition six because it was part of the decision.
Yeah, well, why don't you just tell them to, we'll put it off to the next meeting and have them, get some type of explanation, have someone show up, whatever, I guess.
Yeah.
I don't, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, I think there's to be more communication.
I would say, I would say, at the very least, what would change from the original approval.
Right. Because, Dave, you're saying they already have units approved that they haven't built yet, correct?
Oh, no, these are the ones that are built and that are being occupied.
But they have an approval for a second phase two, correct?
Stone Ridge Two.
But, but it's in the same abutting property, right?
It's a buttset.
A buttset, yeah.
It's a separate lot.
It's a separate, yeah, but so if you're right, if they add those more, maybe, you know, yeah, I mean, why not ask them to come in and explain it, I guess?
We can do that.
I don't, I don't think, Mr. Chairman, you know, you're talking a half a million-dollar bond, and nobody shows up, no representative, nobody from the companies. Somebody should be here.
Well, again, the town engineer did her job and reviewed it, and it was appreciative that the comment went in there, that she felt it may, it may not be practical due to, due to the dimensional environmental constraints. Again, even in the request of the bond, they didn't meet item six.
What you said, what was item six?
Item six was the, the bike lane.
The bike lane, yeah.
So they should have come back and said, listen, it was, it's not feasible to do this.
They could have put sidewalks on both sides, one side for walking, one side for the bikes, I guess, too, right?
The street's so skinny.
Yeah.
I think at the very least, we need to find out what changed from the original approval. Did the wetlands change? Did something happen with the geography? Why was it approved originally and not able to be accomplished now?
Dave, but could they go from, just an idea, like, could they go from the back of the property, like, from the back of the property to the bike trail through the woods?
Probably, I don't know. That, that's my point. I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, because, because that bike trail would run right past it. They could go through, they could go through the back of the property by Restaurant Depot and go through the back there, too.
Right. So I'm gathering, based on the comments from the board, that we continue this to our next hearing in anticipation of the developer giving us an explanation why he couldn't meet condition six on the special, on the special permit.
Yeah, they did do a nice job on that place. It came out nice.
Came out nice.
It came out nice, but yeah.
So is that a motion?
I make it.
A motion by Bob that we continue this until the next meeting and that the developer provide us some information on why the condition of item number six is part of the permit was not, was not looked at or committed.
Can I just, one, one comment really quick. Is there a number allocated to that where we can possibly release a certain amount?
Well, that's the point. We had a $550,000 bond, bond to cover these items, and they're looking for all of it back, but there's been no discussions and no communication about meeting item number six on the condition. So therefore, we'll continue it.
Might be good to take a ride up there, too, to look at.
Yeah, prior to the next meeting, just so we've got a visual.
See what it says, see what it looks like.
There's a motion by Bob, second.
My second.
Second by John. All those in favor? I propose that's unanimous. Thank you. I'm just going to put this here. This is on the application of Gararilty, Inc., 232 West Street for special permit relief in section 2.3 of the zoning bylaw in relation to a parcel of land located on the northeasterly corner of East Main Street and Cedar Street, known and numbered as 108 East Main Street. The special permit relief is sought in order to, for the petitioner to utilize the property for motor vehicle repair business with a focus on automotive glass replacement. Board members, I'll remind you, in the past, I think, we provided the applicant, he obtained a special permit, which is probably in the file, concerning either car rental, yeah, motor vehicle rental business, car motor vehicle rental business. So that special permit, based on tonight, will go away, and the new application is here for the use. So let me just run this. You are, sir?
Tim Power with PBI Site Design, civil engineer, just representative of the owner.
Okay, all right. So what I'll do is let me read the application real quick. I'll try and paraphrase it because I think we all know the site. The applicant states that the op, is to operate a motor vehicle repair business and a focus on auto glass replacement. The special permit sought in harmony with the neighbor of the general purpose of the zoning bylaw. The applicant states the proposed use isn't appropriate in the commercial zone. Concerning the use of the premises would not create undue traffic or conditions or impair pedestrian safety, the applicant states the auto glass replacement store will result in less intense use with regard to automobile, automobile trips and movements at a busy intersection. Concerning the question, the proposed use will not cause harm to the neighborhood or create a nuisance or hazard affecting the health, safety, and general welfare of the public, the applicant states that the change in use will result in less automobiles stored on the property, improving the aesthetic of the site. So with that, this did go in front of the planning board, and the planning board reviewed the petition above at their regular scheduled meeting on January 2nd, and the planning board has made a favorable recommendation. From the chairman, Caligoni, along with town plan Larry Duncan, the applicant was previously granted a special permit by the ZBA in 2022, which allowed for the rental car business on the subject property. And of course, the attached decision is here. 108 East Main Street was a site of the former Gibbs Gas Station, and the separate adjacent lot to lot three Cedar Street contains a non-conforming three-family dwelling. The auto-related use required a special permit from the ZBA, and the changes relating to the non-conforming triplex required a special permit as well. The applicant now seeks to establish an auto glass replacement business on the property in lieu of the previously approved rental car operation. The approvals relating to the three-family dwelling remain unaffected with this current proposal. This proposal is to authorize the auto glass operation while retaining the use of the two properties as one site is previously approved. The two old driveways on Cedar Street have been closed, the existing driveway for the triplex on Cedar Street has been widened, and the width of the remaining driveway on East Main Street has been reduced. The triplex and its associated off-street parking has been retained. Alterations proposed to the site with this application are limited to pavement. Striping, landscaping is being provided within the area that would be necessary for any future configuration of the East Main Street and Cedar Street intersection. In addition, the two parcels will be formally merged into one lot. They recommend that a favorable report be followed up to the ZBA subject to all relevant conditions, and the original special permit remaining in effect and subject, subject to all relevant conditions of the original special permit will remain and subject to the final site plan approval by the planning board, which has to go back to the planning board for site plan. So just give us an overview of.
Dave, can I just ask a question? You just said that it's all going to become one lot?
It is one lot.
It is currently, or it's going to become?
No, we permitted it. Take a look at the special permit underneath that, the special decision we had, that we actually put this into one whole lot. So just our decision, our last decision on number one. The subject parcels consisting of a combination of two parcels, one being known as 108 East Main Street and one being known as six Cedar Street, both at the end of Stracks and the main and Cedar Street, is proposed to be the site of an automotive dealership and the continued three-family use in the existing three-family structure. Okay?
It doesn't say it's combined into one lot, though.
It is one lot now, right?
I think the special permit groups them together and links them together. I don't know if an A and R has been submitted.
There's no A and R that I'm aware of.
Yeah, that would have removed that property line that was in between the two.
Right, because they had to do that in order to improve the access for the original building.
So they're in common ownership, so they act as one lot, but.
Yeah, I mean, I would want to make sure if we approve this that.
Doesn't get separated.
That, that it's one lot and it's deed restricted, that no, no further subdivision.
Right, just similar to what we did to something else recently up on.
Yeah, because I don't see that in the decision.
And the other quick question I have, and I hope you're going to answer it, is this owner occupied or is this a tenant?
This is a tenant.
Okay. So the, so the issuance of a special permit is going to the tenant, it doesn't go to the property?
We're aware of that.
All right, okay. All right, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No problem. So I don't need to spend much time on it. The plan you're looking at today has.
What happened to silence?
It isn't silent, I, you know, I guess it's not.
Ready to pay attention now?
I go, I apologize.
The plan you're looking at has generally, it can, generally been constructed when we got the permit about a year and a half ago. The owner proceeded with the improvements for the paving and the landscaping as you see here. The only thing he stopped on was the striping, just due to the change in, pending change in use. So the only change to the site plan is the striping, as you see here, a little more traditional parking spaces. The use, as the chair said, is going to be an auto glass replacement. We do have a representative here from the, the future tenants, if you have any questions, but from what I understand, a lot of their business is, is mobile, so, and the trucks, even the drivers in the vans, take their vans home at night. So, you know, they'll come in during the day, there might be a little bit of business during the day, but at the end of the day, there's really no cars left on the lot. I think he said he has one storage box in the back, but everything is sort of cleaned up at the end of the day. So that's why we presented this as a less intense use compared to the rental car that will have cars parked here and stored here and in and out. There'll be some vans coming, going during business hours and then mostly quiet. And I think that's it. I'll be able to answer more questions on the use. Again, this is really just modification of the use is what we're asking for.
Any increase in the structure?
No, no changes to the structure. The structure is built, as shown there. They'll rebrand it when they take the space officially, they're signed and go through deprocess there, but paint colors, et cetera.
Was this the, is this the original parking plan?
No, this is the proposed redevelopment.
I know.
Just a new one?
So this is the new parking layout.
Correct. Do we have the old one?
The asphalt surface did not change. They paved to this asphalt limits you see here.
What's the date on it?
The only change is the striping.
Was that change in the curb from that original time when they asked, the town asked for that turn for the.
That's not done, but they're, they're agreeing that that can happen.
That's the essence of why that's, right, and done.
Yeah, okay.
We built, we built the pavement accommodating the future taking, as best we knew what it would be.
But it was never granted.
Well, it was never taken yet, and so the town hasn't taken it, but for future, it's there if we need it, and the decision reflected that. So the plan that you have here, is that the one you're submitting to the planning board?
Correct, I just looked at.
Make sure you have the date on it? Or is it going to be a modification one?
That's, that's it.
Because the other plan had an awful lot more parking spaces and stacking for.
Correct, correct.
So is auto glass repair and maintenance?
And replacement, yes.
So why would there be automotive repair?
I don't know, and I don't know if that's written correctly in the zoning, the zoning use.
Because it's a separate permit, automotive repairs is a separate permit from what you're trying to do here. So it, it's auto use related, but you're doing glass.
Correct, we're doing.
So you're not repairing motor vehicles.
Correct. And the use, we're, I think we're doing, it says in the zoning table, it just says motor vehicle slash boat sales slash rental slash used. Also, are there boat service slash repair? Both of those require us.
But as the new tenant in the building, it's going to be.
Fitted.
Glass.
Correct.
Okay.
Just a curve there. So is that, that hasn't, there's no easement created?
Correct.
So that's being, that's, there's some curving there for the future turnaround, which would be more beneficial to the town, but there's been nothing given to the town as far as.
No, no, no. The town, just, just as a back history, the town in the past, at one point, actually drafted engineered plans to try and make a right turn only as you're heading towards the center of town.
There's no.
If you track the trail of turning.
There's no benefit to this parcel, to this business as it.
No, no.
As it's currently concentrated.
No, no.
Other than they can sell it back to, to the town, yeah.
Well, again, they own it, so, and again, this is not an eminent domain situation by the town. I think that would improve the turning lanes in that location if that lane was extended wider, but it is not part of this plan, and it's just been sitting there in the town for a number of years as an idea for maybe the future. They're cooperating to say if that happens, they'll cooperate with it.
Is there any way to have them give us an easement for whatever use that they're looking for?
Well, we have it in the decision, at the cooperative pass decision, so that'll stay in there. Says right here on number five. An easement of at least five feet shall be granted to the town at the corner of Cedar and East Main Street to permit changing of the location of the traffic light if necessary to improve circulation of the intersection. So that's, that was the last decision, so that'll stay in this decision. Okay?
What about the other 25 feet?
That's their property, that's nothing we can do anything about. They own it.
So we can't request an easement in order to be able to use it the way that the town?
Well, again, again, the, the, the town hasn't gone down the road to try and do anything concerning eminent domain, so we can't address anything that is not there. Okay, so how many vehicle parking spots are on this site plan right now?
Total of 23 are proposed.
Okay, and you, I'm sure the planning board will, will provide you guidelines for dumpster locations and handicap parking and what have you.
Yeah, it is shown, it should have shown on there, but we'll defer to the site plan review. Like I said, this is, other than striping, essentially the same site.
Now, the existing building was recently completed.
Yeah, it looks good.
On here, it's, it's states existing structures 1600 and change square feet to be renovated.
I'll admit that might be a leftover note, so I apologize. So other than, it has been renovated.
He's got it out there anyways, to the planning board. Storage containers, by the way, are a special permit, so if, if there's a, if you, if the tenant needs a storage container dropped on the site, he's going to need a special permit.
Is there a size limit?
I, building department will tell you.
Okay, I don't know. I know they have something where glass gets dropped off, I don't know how big, I think it's fairly small, but we'll find out. We'll take a look.
Yeah, that's all, yeah. Okay. Any other comments from members?
All of that area outside of the paving, that will be landscaped.
Correct, yeah.
Correct. That's a requirement. Why, you want to put some calvertrees in there?
No, but I know it's been a point of contention.
Yeah, the condition of it.
Yeah.
So actually, the landscape, that's a good point, the landscaping needs to be maintained Anybody here on this hearing that would like to make a comment and have questions? Any other board members have any comments? So there'll be items in here that will stay within the existing permit as it relates to the site. Again, the, the planning board will have the, the final say on the site plan. There is six parking spaces closest to three Cedar Street, shall continue to exit and shall serve the, the three family. I believe those are supposed to be identified. Are those identified?
We certainly can, they're on the top of the page there, right next to the three, right next to.
Okay, yeah, we just want to make sure that the, the location for the three family and the parking for the tenant's three family, those are identified for the tenants. Okay?
So we're actually negating the special permit in total?
Well.
Correct? Because you can't, you can't negate some of it.
No, what we can do is this, this special permit will encompass some of the items from the original one.
Right, but the original one has gone away.
But the original one's going to go away.
Okay.
Because it's not, there's no.
And some will carry through the new one.
Correct, that's correct.
Is there anything that's limiting the use of that space that's not being proposed to be used?
Well, right now, right now, it's for, for glass, it's for glass replacement and repair, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's really not automotive repair?
Is there anything that?
It's automotive repair related to glass replacement and repair.
You're talking about the actual parcel that's being used. I'm talking about the parcel that's being proposed, that's a turnaround. Is there anything that's limiting the use of that?
No, signs and whatnot, I don't.
As far as like deed it, not being able to like expand the parking towards it?
There's nothing that.
We have to provide a landscape buffer to begin with.
Correct, there is.
So that's part of the percentage coverage of the lot. So you have to have a landscape percentage coverage of the lot as it relates to the size of the lot and the building coverage.
Correct. And so to further elaborate on your question, if for some reason he wanted to pave or rip out the pavement in the back and make that landscaped and then use some of that corner that's left, until the taking happens, he still could, it's within his right.
Right, that's my point.
So that's the, there's nothing limiting there. I don't, he doesn't have an intention of doing that, I think he wants to work with the town, that's why we've drawn the plan.
No, he's done a good job with the building. He's, he's put a lot of time in up in the building. The only, the only thing that probably, what, what I, I don't want to see is car stacking in those spaces.
So can we put some. It does say this, Dave, it does say number three, the plan for redevelopment, the property proposed and only landscaping is to be provided within the area, which will be necessary for any future reconfiguration on East Main Street and Cedar Street. So I'm reading that as only landscaping can be done there.
Right, that, well, that's the open space, that's what you.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, right. If that was a condition, that's a little more, to your point.
So then, in other words, if he decided to landscape there where, he couldn't add it to the.
I think that condition prevents him from.
That's it.
Yep.
Okay.
On the journey, but that's how I.
So we'd like to avoid any car stacking in those spaces, which is double stacking because then that creates the flow of the interior of the parking lot. Some of these, there's a couple of places in town right now that are double stacking, and that's certainly not good. Okay, so, so a couple of things I want to just go over real quick with board members because we'll, we'll refer this to the item in the old decision. So that number two will stay. Number three will stay. Number four will stay, oh, sorry. Of course, number one will stay on the other one, and then we're also going to, so we're going to have a motion to change use to auto glass replacement and repair only. No car stacking, stacking allowed. Landscaping aspects will stay the same. The special permit will run with the applicant. The special permit will run with the applicant. There is an applicant, correct? There will be, is there a company name?
There is a company name. Uh, what was it?
It's Auto Glass Now.
Okay. And then, of course, there'll be a restriction not to subdivide the lot. It's also going to be submitted to the final board, planning board review and approval. And then also the six parking spaces, which is number four from the original decision. Six parking spaces closest to the 3 Cedar Street property shall continue to exist and serve that three-family use only and shall be identified with signage as tenant parking.
You're saying, David, the applicant is the one that the special permit is going to be given to?
Right.
Unfortunately, I don't know if this makes a difference or not, but the applicant is not, it's Garret Realty and not Auto Glass Now.
As the owner.
Applicant.
Yeah, so...
I'm just, I'm not being...
Well, no, that's, it's a good point.
Same as applicant, Garret Realty. So if we approve for this, we're approving for Garret Realty.
It should be approved for them.
Correct.
They don't have the right to do it without it.
That's correct.
You're right. It should be approved.
And it, and it needs to, what should have happened, he should have signed it.
He should have applied for it, not Garret Realty.
He should have applied for it, so that's why I'm going to need his information.
That is correct. Is there any way to amend that?
Well, it actually, frankly, it went through the planning board under Garret Realty.
Yeah, Larry should have told them that they didn't understand who the applicant was.
Oh, it says...
Larry should have told them.
The applicant is Garret Realty.
The applicant should have been you guys.
Yeah. It's not Auto Glass Now. So you can't give it to Auto Glass Now because they didn't approve, apply for it. Garret Realty did.
That's true.
My lawyer...
Who was the owner of the three family?
Garret Realty. Same thing. Same as a real estate. Same as a real estate.
Is there any way to amend that where it's them? It's already in the process, it's just the logistics of...
Well, well, again, you know, we can make that suggestion, but if it doesn't, if it doesn't muster town council, then it's coming back.
It's Larry should have, should have let them know that.
Well, again, anytime someone opens up a business, the applicant usually fills it out, and the owner signs the application.
That's what should have been done?
That's what should have been done.
Is there a, a process to, or just by condition that...
What, what we can do is, we, we can, we can make this condition upon, this, this permit can be issued, replacing Garret Realty as the applicant to the tenant's name, and we can make that predicated upon the approval of town council. Because it's a, it's a gray area.
Yep.
And frankly, this doesn't happen hardly at all.
Yep.
So in order to save time and try to get this gentleman's business going, I think that would be the best way to approach it.
Yep. Is so as a, maybe a suggested condition that, you know, acknowledging Auto Glass Now as the user, if there's any change to the tenant or user, or a condition that the permit is only valid for the current tenant, Auto Glass user, to operate on the property?
Right now, this is going to be issued, it's going to be amended. The suggestion is going to be amended to Auto Glass Now as the tenant, and the special permit will go to Auto Glass Now as the tenant, and Garret Realty instead of applicant is really the applicant as owner of the property.
Is it the same principle?
It's the same principle because he's actually the owner of the property.
The same principle, owner of both companies?
No.
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 Garret Realty has no connection to Auto Glass Now, other than landlord to tenant.
Any way you can call Jerry about?
Well, if, if there's a change of use in the future, meaning like they want it to go to an auto company or auto repair or gas station, they'd have to come back in front of us anyways.
Right.
Because the use would change. So if, if Garret wanted to like rent it to another glass company, I guess technically he wouldn't have to come back in front of the board.
Yes, he would, because the glass company name would change. Just like the car wash. Just like the car wash.
Yeah. Yeah, well, yeah.
You know, that one.
Yeah, I, I, I know. But I'm just saying, I don't know that anyone would catch it, just what I'm saying, you know?
Right. No, I, I get it. So I think what, what we'll do is, I think the intention, I don't, I don't, no, I'm in a public hearing, I'm not going to call Jerry. We'll, we'll do the amendment, and we'll do Garret, Garret Realty as the owner, and the Auto Glass Now is really the tenant applicant, because it's referenced in Auto Glass throughout the entire application. So I think what we'll do, and, and we'll just make it predicated on approval from town council. So, so the, the special permit will be issued to Auto Glass Now, and where are you from, sir?
The company or myself?
The company.
The company's based out of Charlotte, North Carolina.
Charlotte, it's South Carolina?
North Carolina. Sorry, I'm working.
North Carolina. So the, so the amendment of the use, which is the glass company's use, is to be, is going to Auto Glass Now from North Carolina, and Garret Realty, which is the applicant owner of the property. And this, of course, will be subject to town council's review and approval under these conditions as the amendment.
Would they add the condition, no further subdivision?
There's no further subdivision. That's in the motion. Yep.
You're going to put, yeah, because it's not, it wasn't in the original decision.
I got it here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So again, the applicant, the applicant, the billing owner is Garret, Garret Realty, Inc., and the applicant, of course, for the glass repair business, which is the application for glass repair, and that goes to the applicant, which is Auto Glass Now from North Charlotte. And then also the, the indications that I've also read, there'll be no car stacking, there will be parking spots allotted, six of them, to the three family next door, and those, and that will be signed by Markage, somewhat to the previous permit. There'll be no subdivision, no further subdivision of the lot at all. And of course, the planning board will have the final say on all site plan and approvals, and the landscaping items of the last decision, the following items will be included, item two, three, and four. One, three, because the special permit runs with Auto Glass Now and not the owner of the property, and number four. So with that, is there a motion?
I, I, before a motion, I, I just don't think it's the right way to go. I, I have to agree. You know, if we were doing this, you know, according to the way things have always been done, we make exceptions, this is going to set precedence. What's another month, you guys? They're going to set you off? You know, they're going to set you back millions of dollars, or?
No.
I just, you know, I, I'm just not comfortable with it.
If you need us to apply, I mean, we've done this before. We have special use...
Yeah, I'm not picking on you. Yeah. It just wasn't done.
No, understood.
It just...
I mean, I just wanted to know because it's pretty clear that we did it. Sorry, I, I understand the process, and if you need us to apply our, we have a development team that knows process. I, I mean, I just don't think that we understood it. This was the way...
Right, and that's unfortunate, and I, you know, I apologize for whoever, okay? But I just think, you know, because, because the planning board is under Garret Realty, okay, the approvals are under Garret Realty, and we're going to make a special amendment, I, I just don't think that's the right way to go.
It's another case of the owner making the tenant do the legwork.
Yeah, I just, you know, anyway.
The tenant didn't do the legwork.
Right. Well, again, there's a, there's a procedure in place with the application process.
The owner's hired me, just because he's, I think he's out of the country.
He's what?
He's out of the country, so he's hired, I work directly for the owner. We represent the owner, and we brought the tenant here to...
So the last time, the last time we had an illegal business operating for three years in town, and if the owner didn't, didn't feel it was important enough to come in, guess what happened? We could have shut him down. So with the, and Bob's brought up a very good point, and apparently I tried the amendment, and I did not get a motion for it. So with no motion, then I, I assume we're going to go back to continuance. So you have the right for a continuance. See if we can get this resubmitted for next month.
Well, yeah, you could, they could continue it, and then you can talk to Jerry tomorrow, and then we can, if Jerry says you can proceed, then, you know, the next meeting, you, we can vote on it.
Well, we'd probably just modify the application.
Or they'll have to redo the application if that's what Jerry says.
Mr. Chair, if I could suggest, I guess I'd suggest a continuance. We can confirm if town council thinks it addresses the other members' concerns during the amendment. If not, then we'll, then we'll withdraw without prejudice and redo the application. But rather than lose our place in line withdrawing right now...
Yeah, what, you'll, yeah, just, you'll just, yeah, we'll just continue it.
And we can communicate with the town council as well, if they...
I, you know, I'm, I'm surprised that this got, this got through, because usually it doesn't happen.
I'm sorry, but Larry should have made that point later.
First of all, the application process is pretty clear on what you need, and when an applicant files for a special permit, it's the applicant that fills out the permit process, and the owner signs, the property signs that application.
That's true.
So in the directions with the application, that is all outlined, just never got followed. And it's, sorry that it didn't not get followed, but in any event, we're going to need to continue it, so. So we're going to continue this till our March hearing, which usually falls on the second week, which will bring us to the 14th, I believe. This is a... So if you'll do me a favor and come on up and...
Absolutely.
Print and sign as representative of the applicant, that would be great. Okay? Super. Thank you very much, and this will be continued till very March 14th hearing. Do we have your contact info in the file?
Uh, it should be in there.
Okay. It's also on the plans, right?
Yeah.
Okay, super. Thanks for catching that, Bob. It was a good job. Can I have the plan?
Well, he said he don't want to be a jerk, but what's right is right.
That's what, that's what, that's why you have more, more than one member. I can't remember everything. Is that part of it or no?
Uh, maybe. No.
That's your copy, right?
That's his copy, yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay, moving on. This is on the application of, I know, Hoyle, Hoyle? Hoyle. 60 Highland Street for relief from provision of section 24.25 of the zoning bylaw in relation to 15,000 square foot more parcel of land located on the Wesley side of Highland Street, and owner is numbered at 60 Highland Street. The petitioner proposes to construct a carport to the south side of the property, which carport would be closer to the lot line than otherwise permitted. If you two, whoever's representing, come on up to the front, that would be helpful. Okay, and reviewing the application, it, it looks like you're looking to propose a 22 by 30 carport. Right now, side yard requirement, it's a 15, and 10 will be provided.
We have it here, right? We have it, right?
The plan, right. Not changing any number of people that are living in the home. Doesn't look like there's, there's no indication of any pedestrian safety, any relation to toil to photography concerning any of the conditions, and it looks like you have an elderly, is it an elderly person living in the home? Is that what it is?
Parents.
My parents.
Okay. With that, let's shoot over to the planning board letter. Planning board did review this petition at their January 16th hearing, and the planning board made a motion, a favorable, favorable recommendation failed by a vote of two in favor and two opposed. The town planning letter indicates that the applicant requests various to allow for construction of a carport adjacent to a single-family dwelling on the subject property. The applicant recently received a special permit to add a supplemental suite within the single-family dwelling.
Hey, that mostly we read.
This is the letter of recommendation.
Oh, okay.
The proposed 22 by 29, three-car, three-car carport is to be separated from the house by one foot. The previous attached garage was converted to living space as part of the supplemental suite remodeling. The proposed carport is to be 10 feet from the side, south property line, and it's closest .1, .15 feet required by the RB district. The proposed carport has been shifted to the west and well past the original garage door that was on the south side of the wall. Therefore, the town planner recommended a favorable report to send off to the zoning board. So with that, give us an idea of what you're doing.
Well, basically, she has elderly parents that they granted that supplemental...
Apartment?
Apartment, and, and she's trying to get a carport on top of it, so when you park the car underneath, because it's not a garage door anymore, because they use that for the apartment, they can park the car underneath and walk into their apartment without having snow.
So the, there's a back section there. Was there a carport in the back at one point?
There used to be, yes.
Okay. Is that still there, or is that...
It's gone, so the garage, the garage, and the carport, that was just in their apartment. Then it turned into the apartment.
Okay. Anybody here on this hearing?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Okay, any other comments? The carport, is it struck, is it, is it steel? What is it?
Uh, we're going to do just a general carport. We're not sure, I don't, I don't know if this is, and this is a question because she might want to go in that direction. Is there any way, with the carport being built, right now, I don't think on a design that you have, there's any walls on it.
Right.
I would recommend for her parents, because of the snow, just flying in there.
Right, right.
To have some...
So it's open, it's open through the side, you mean?
All sides are open.
Okay.
Other than the side that the house is hugging.
That's a question for the building inspector.
Right.
Not for us.
Okay. So if he, so if he's fine with it, or...
So you got to ask him.
Okay.
Yeah.
But otherwise, anybody else, John?
No.
Your motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. The hearing was shorter than you've been here.
It's okay, I like to listen to these things. I learn. Tell them that, thank you.
Ray, I guess, Ray, I guess the question is, we put sides up to become now a building... Ray, I guess, Ray, I guess the question is, we put sides up to become our building, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I'm not trying to put garage doors and.
Right, right, right.
We're just trying to.
And once again, like David said, that's a Johnny question.
Yeah, thank you. Gentlemen, have a good evening, thank you, good time.
Thank you.
See you later, have a good night, thank you.
You too. Have a nice weekend.
You too. Okay. Onto our final hearing of the night. Okay, this is on the application of Kevin and Caroline McCarthy, 45 Madden Ave., for a variance or special permit, relief is necessary in relation to a parcel land consisting of 10,169 square feet, more or less, located on the easterly side of Madden Ave., known and numbered as 45 Madden Avenue. Zoning relief is sought in order to permit the construction of a 24 by 24 garage on the southerly side of the building, which would have a bedroom area above the garage. The proposed garage would be closer to the side setbacks than otherwise is required. To the extent that a special permit relief is being required is requested pursuant to section 3.1 of the zoning bylaws relating to a non-conforming use of the structure. With that, this has gone on to the planning board. At their February 6th hearing, the planning board made a favorable recommendation, paraphrase, the applicant requests a variance for a special permit to construct an attached garage in a single-family dwelling on the subject property. The proposed two-story addition includes a 24 by 24 two-car attached garage, and is to be 9.4 feet from the side, south property line at its closest point. 15 feet is required in the RB district, hence the variance request. The listing, the existing lot is non-conforming as to the lot area and lot width, and the existing dwelling is non-conforming as to the front and side yard nought setbacks, hence the special permit application. The zoning in this area was changed to RBF after the neighborhood was partially developed, and the subject dwelling was built in 1952, therefore, they recommend a favorable report be sent off to the zoning board. With that zoning board members, you have most everything in your file, and just reading through this application, the applicant's indicating that the, the existing house was built in 1952 along with the neighborhood of other houses, and the neighborhood consists of the undersized lots and pre-existing non-conforming houses. Concerning the question asked, was the proposed use of the premises will not create undue traffic congestion or impair the safety of the pedestrians, the applicant states proposed addition will not create any additional traffic or trips per day, as the property will still remain a single-family home. The use of the, the property remains a single-family home. So with that, we have, we have Mike Dean here from DNL Design, is that the name of the company?
Yes, Mike Dean from DNL Design, yeah, I represent the applicant.
Okay. So tell us what you're going to do.
I represent the applicant, Kevin and Carolyn McCarthy, who's located right behind me. They live at 45 Madden Ave., they live there currently. They just purchased this property just over, just over three months ago in October 2023. The, the house is Carolyn's grandparents that they bought.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
The parents that live in this area, in this location as well.
Oh, you would spend money on a plan, huh?
It was given to me. Kevin got it from me. So, and this is the house that Carolyn grew up in, so this is kind of a family deal going on, trying to keep that family.
Close by.
Yeah, close by and intact. So what's going on is there's, there's Madden Ave. located here, the left side of the plan is the existing conditions plan, the right side of the plan is the proposed conditions plan. Madden Ave. is located along here, north up in that direction, south out to West Street, about 1,500 feet south to West Street, and only about 100 feet or so south along the opposite side is Teresa, Teresa Ave. Pre-existing non-conforming is shown here, it is a pre-existing non-conforming lot with 10,000, let's see, 10,169 square feet is what the area is comprised of, the existing, pre-existing non-conforming house shown in the ground here. And that is pre-existing non-conforming in the setbacks in the front.
All right, how many feet is that? 24 versus 30?
25, excuse me, 24 and a half, this.
For the car?
Setback is 24 and a half existing, and the northern setback is 12 and a half.
Okay.
So those are your existing conditions, town water, town sewer.
So you're looking for variances for those two as well, okay.
Yeah, cleaning up, cleaning up everything, sure, so that's a double position, petition also for the special permit because of the pre-existing non-conformity and expanded upon that, that's one, and then the variance will move over, will move into the proposed conditions. The proposal consists of this addition shown here, in yellow, the rear portion is a proposed deck. So in extending the existing building to the southerly direction, there's a 24 by 24 garage, front entry, and then a small little connector that takes, that connects the existing to the proposed, and then there's some living space up above, up above the garage.
Okay.
So, so that is the section that we're, we're seeking the variance for, right in there, 9.4 feet, I believe, let's see, 9.4 feet.
Well, you're trying to get, you're actually getting the variance for all of those.
Yes.
Front sides and both sides, front and both sides.
Well, I want to clean up the paperwork, but the petition is to, the new proposed 9.4 feet, and then clean up the existing.
Right.
So 9.4 feet versus the RB requirement of 15 feet.
Right.
As previously mentioned, this is, these lots down in this area here, 1952, and then over time, the zoning was changed to an RB, so now you're under the RB requirements, however, most of the neighborhoods. So certainly, this certainly will not be a detriment for the neighborhood, it'll, it'll still fit in, this will be in addition to a, you know, house built in 1952, it's a modest cake right now, they're going to expand upon that and modern, you know, update the house and add value actually to, you know, to, to the structure itself, so there's certainly no detriment to the neighborhood.
Okay.
And that's, that's pretty much it.
House plans I can see, they're here. Anybody in the audience would like to be heard on this? Questions?
I have no problem with this.
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve as submitted, is there a second?
Second.
Second by John, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, so we're, we're approving the addition, the proposed new addition along with the 9.45, 9 feet four side lot requirement, you may have to pin that, Mike?
Yep.
So I'm going to ask him, I'm going to ask you to pin it. And also, we're cleaning up the front, side, the front and side of the original house, correct? So we'll also approve the variance request for the original house, front and, sorry. So with those two motions, everyone's approved, unanimous, opposed. 20-day appeal period, good luck, congratulations.
Thank you.
You're going to make that a nice beautiful house, good luck with it.
Thank you.
Anybody else care to be heard? I think that's our last hearing of the night. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion.
Motion by John to adjourn, second.
Aye.
Second by Dave, all those in favor, opposed, that's unanimous. Good night, everyone, thank you, we'll see you next month.